And called to order, the city council, City of Granberry, regular meeting. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 19, 2024. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas, 76048. We're now called to order, and it's my pleasure to introduce Reverend Dr. Scott Youngblood, who is the Granberry First United Methodist Church Reverend. So Reverend Youngblood, if you'll lead us in prayer. All stand, please, and then we will do the pledge of allegiance.
I've been asked to keep the prayer short, but every Sunday they ask me to keep the sermon short, too. Let us pray. Thank you for these who give so much to our city. Thank you for their willingness to set aside their own agendas to do what's best for our city. Help them to make good decisions that benefit our city. Amidst the incredible number of distractions and details that are part of the job, help them to focus and see what's most important. Be with their family members, who may or may not have been part of the decision to run for office or apply for their job, who get most of the difficulties because they come home and may not get all of the blessings of city service. May the agenda before them be handled efficiently, but not hastily. Help them to weigh both sides of any issue and do what's right without harsh judgment for colleagues or constituents who may not agree with them. Help them to find the joy in what they do and help dissipate the negative impact of hard decisions. Guide this meeting and the planning and the implementation of our Granberry City Council. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Now, if you'll join us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, our Texas flag, our liberty to be Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We're going to move to proclamations and presentation. We have about five proclamations tonight, so I've asked the members of the city council if they will assist me with that. They have graciously agreed to do that. All of these proclamations are important, and I think it's important that we get those in full voice, and I know that I would be hoarse before the end of this and probably tearing up during the Vietnam War Veterans Day. So if you, the city council will just join me down front, we will do this. Thank you. Let's see. I have one, right?
I have one.
Oh. Those are the public comments. Yeah. Where's my copy of that?
It's underneath all of them. Is it right there?
Not yet. Okay. I am one proclamation short, but I'll find it before we get to it.
Which one do you need, Mayor? I'll find it.
Sexual assault.
No, he did it after Bruce.
Did he take it? Hmm? Okay.
What do you want to do now? Assault thing.
When you work with a great crew like this crew, things happen. Good things happen. Do you guys want to get together here? I think the first proclamation is the Vietnam War Remembrance, and I'm going to turn this over to our newest councilperson. Skip, if you will, please.
So I'm a Vietnam veteran, so it's an honor and a privilege for me to do this proclamation to proclaim March 29, 2024, as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. The official proclamation is as follows. Whereas the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017 designated March 29 of each year as National Vietnam War Veterans Day to honor all veterans who served on active duty in the U.S. Armed Forces between November 1, 1955, and May 15, 1975. It was chosen to be observed in perpetuity and whereas more than nine million Americans served and nearly three million served in Vietnam, of those, more than 58,000 Americans were killed and thousands more were wounded or determined to be missing. And whereas, all those who served their country deserve the heartfelt acknowledgement and profound gratitude of their countrymen. And whereas, National Vietnam War Veterans Day not only highlights the service of the Armed Forces during the Vietnam War, but also the contribution of federal agencies and governmental and non-governmental organizations that served with or in support of the Armed Forces and pays tribute to the contributions made on the home front by the people of the United States during the Vietnam War. Now therefore, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, will proclaim March 29, 2024, as National Vietnam War Veterans Day in Granberry and encourage the community to thank, honor, respect, and support each of our Vietnam veterans and their families, given under his hand and seal of the City of Granberry, Texas, on this 19th day of March, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. We will be having the photos after we have everyone complete all of the proclamations, and then we'll have, we'll break and we'll do the photo sessions if you guys bear with me here. Next proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I believe Mr. Steve Vail is going to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. As Mayor said, this is Child Abuse Prevention Month here for the, for March 2024. So the official proclamation reads, whereas children are the embodiment of dreams and aspirations for future and as such deserve to grow and develop in nurturing environments free from fear and victimization, whereas our society has a responsibility to protect our children and help them thrive in a safe environment, as every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, feel secure, and free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect. Whereas throughout the community, there are dedicated individuals and organizations such as Mission Granberry, Case of Hood and Somerville Counties, Paloxi River Children's Advocacy Center, Kids Armor of Hope, Hood County Crimes Against Children's Task Force, Hood County Sheriff's Department, and the Granberry Police Department, who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and parents, and help parents obtain the assistance they need. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious civic organizations, law enforcement agents, and the business community. Therefore, Jim Jarrett is Mayor of the City of Granberry, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Granberry and urge all citizens to join and dedicate their energies to cherishing our children by helping them grow and develop, and develop free from victimization, so they may mature into successful adults. Furthermore, I urge the community to join Mission Granberry, Case of Hood County, of Hood and Somerville Counties by participating and paint the town blue during the month of April by displaying a blue ribbon, light, or sponsoring a Case of Blue flag. Get it under the hand and the seal of the City of Granberry on this 19th day of March, 2024. Jim Jarrett, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vail. The third one that I have here is for, is for Mr. Woodley. You guys moved around on me. I had this all organized, in my, in my mind, anyway. This is the sexual assault. You have this one? You have it, right? Yeah. Okay.
Not a problem. Whereas sexual assault is a serious crime that touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, socioeconomic status, and whereas the Granberry community recognizes and participates in public awareness campaign to support National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations such as Mission Granberry that provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims, and whereas preventing sexual assault means changing the social norms that condone violence and requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each wholeheartedly committed to transforming our community. Now therefore, in recognition, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, sexual assault program, programs and victim service providers, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, Texas, do hereby proclaim April, 2024, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and urge all residents to become involved in the efforts to prevent and respond to sexual assault and recognize the impact it has in our community, given under his hand, the seal of the City of Granberry on this 19th day of March, 2024. Jim Jarrett, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Woodley. I now have our senior councilperson. That's right. Right? Our longest-serving councilperson. He will be speaking to, delivering a proclamation on Autism Awareness Month.
Thank you. Yeah, I asked to do this one because most of you know my middle son is autistic, so this one is special to me. So whereas about one in 36 children has been identified with Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD, and whereas ASD is a developmental disability that can cause significant social communication and behavioral challenges, and whereas with proper education, training, and community living options, individuals with autism can lead prominent, dynamic lives in their communities and aim to reach their potential. And whereas Lake Point Academy and Resource Center are nonprofit organizations dedicated to expanding support and access to educational and therapeutic resources for children with special needs in our community. Now therefore, Jim Jarrett, as Mayor of City of Granberry, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Autism Awareness Month in Granberry and urge all citizens to join in promoting autism awareness, inclusion, and self-determination for all, to help assure that each person with ASD is provided an opportunity to achieve the highest possible quality of life, given under the hand and seal of the City of Granberry on this 19th day of March, 2024, by Jim Jarrett, Mayor.
Thank you. I failed to mention Mr. Greg Corrigan, our longest-serving councilman. Thank you. The next proclamation is for Procurement Month, and I want to offer this up to Mr. Eddie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The official proclamation, whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas the City of Granberry's dedicated procurement staff contributes significantly to the efficiency and effectiveness of public sector procurement, ensuring the responsibility use of taxpayers' dollars through transparent and competitive process, and whereas National Procurement Month is an opportunity to acknowledge and celebrate the vital function that purchasing and materials management professions serve within our government and educational institutions. And whereas the Institution for Public Procurement has proclaimed the month of March as Procurement Month to further expand the awareness of the procurement professional's role to government officials, residents, businesses, and corporate leaders. Now therefore, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of March, 2024, as Procurement Month in Granberry and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the crucial role of the purchasing and materials management profession and the quality and sustainability of goods and services procured for the community, given under the hand and the seal of the City of Granberry on this 19th day of March, 2024, by Jim Jarrett, Mayor.
Thank you. If you guys would all stay with us up here, I think we can start getting. I do want to make a quick comment on the procurement and all of the staff in general. That's what supports this group. Where are you going? He said he had to get out of that tie, so. But that is the support, that is the support that supports this group up here. This group supports the city, the city manager, and the entire city staff, and believe me, you have a good city council and you have a great city staff. So the, thank you. So if, if any of the members who would want to come up for the National Vietnam War Veterans Day and while we, we'll present that and have a photo or two. Right here?
Center stage.
Center stage, yes. Absolutely. Keep moving down. Just a little bit.
I'm no Italian. Perfect. Perfect.
By the way, the gentleman with the big camera will tell us where we want to go here, right?
Sure. Thank you.
Go ahead. Margaret have something to say? Greg, you have the mic?
On March 29, on March 29 at 11:00 AM, we will have a Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Event down at Memorial Lane, and you all are invited. If you have friends that you know are Vietnam, please bring them down. It'll be a short event.
Thank you. Yes, you keep that. Thank you. Are there those representing the Child Abuse Prevention Month in the audience? Please, thank you. Yes. Oh, yeah.
You got to be up there.
Oh, good.
Oh, no. Sorry about that.
Jump in here, Gene.
Come on, let's meet here.
Please.
All right.
Wait.
Wait a minute.
Pay attention out here.
Thank you. Thank you all. Who's going to take this? Gene? Don't lose it. And for Sexual Assault Awareness Month?
You're back.
We're back. We're back.
Marilyn, one of you. Shit.
Oh, no. There's plenty more people coming.
Okay. Put that up.
We got a reading down there.
Are we good?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you so much.
Senior.
Yeah, right. And are others here for the Autism Awareness Month?
We need one more over here to balance it out. There you go. Perfect. All right.
Don't squirm. Don't squirm.
Thank you.
We got more pictures here.
You got it?
Look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And now it is for Procurement Month. Do we have others out here in the audience to accept this? Great. I had.
You said no.
We're going to be talking about a lot of finance in a few minutes. Look at the, look at this group because they make sure that they finance among all the others out here, but they make sure that finance, that we get the highest quality at the best price. Okay, we have now left our attorney unsupervised for way too long. Did you get your work done?
I got, I got you on.
Okay. We now have the city council and the city manager an opportunity to issue encouraging statements and to recognize city staff. Mr. Corrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. What a great weekend we enjoyed in Granberry again, even in the midst of rain. We had all the events going on, and I just want to brag on all the folks with the city that go on behind the scenes to make that a great weekend for our, for our guests that come to town and for our people that live here that come and have fun with us. You know, we've got a couple of videos. Let's, show, show those three different things. This is a new video that we've got to promote Granberry.
We've got another video that shows some of the things that go behind the scenes. I think. Yeah.
One more picture.
That was a rainy day.
Thank you. I just wanted to show you all those because, first off, the first one shows Granberry, you know, and what we do and what goes on here, and many of you have lived through those events and been part of those events, and you all know the support that the city staff provide you. And it doesn't matter whether you're Russell Grisard out directing traffic on a Saturday on a rainy day, or the street department putting up the barricades or putting them out on Fridays and Thursdays and whatever day it needs to be, and the support staff that makes sure our restrooms are clean for our guests in the various public restrooms. And, and of course Tammy and her department get all the credit because they, they get to market what we're doing. And, but there's so many people, every department in our city works together behind the scenes. Procurement staff work behind the scenes to even buy that video, and it's all part of it, everybody working together. And I just wanted to brag on every employee that we have with this big crowd here tonight to let everybody know and understand how much we appreciate our staff, whether it's in the parks and what they've done there to keep the parks pretty, and you saw those events that happened with the, the lights, the city beach. Every day there's people cleaning that city beach, and all those things that go behind the scenes, your taxpayer money is funding it. I want you to know you're getting a bang for your buck when you write that check for 38 and a half cents for a hundred dollar value. I can't believe how much we accomplished with so little, and I want to thank the citizens for supporting us, but more than anything, I want to thank the employees for stepping up, delivering excellence in everything they do. So that's what I got for you tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. We were at a meeting this week with a couple of city council, with city manager here, and one of the things that struck me is that your city is very much like the house that you're about to put up for sale, and curb appeal is everything. And I immediately thought of the efforts that Steve Vail has brought to the council when he, he put in place the cleanup day, and collected a ton of things that needed to be cleaned up, and we have another one. Steve, when is that?
April 13.
April 13, this coming month, so look forward to having all of you out there. Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corrigan.
So this past weekend amongst the several other things that were going on, the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department held the Region 16 SFMA District Meeting. For those of you that don't know what that is, SFMA is the governing certifying body for volunteer firefighters. The, the testing that they take is the same that a licensed TCFP or a paid firefighter would take, just in a different setting. So we hosted that. There were over 100 firefighters that attended that training. We offered training for them all day in several different facets, but what I really want to highlight is David Car, and I'm going to butcher his last name, Carvallo, I think, and some of the, his city crew went out and mowed the training field and prepared the training field for the fire department so that we could host this training on Saturday. They went above and beyond their normal duties, and on behalf of city council and the fire department, we want to thank them for all their hard work.
Others?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just quickly, and I'm-
Yes?
Um, they went above and beyond their normal duties and on behalf of city council and the fire department, uh, we want to thank them for all their hard work.
Others?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just quickly, I, I met with Chris Kaufman and Ava this morn, uh, Monday morning to kind of discuss some of the items on the agenda, and, and I do that every week. But I have to tell you that I had just a whole host of questions to ask them, I don't know, ten, twelve, fifteen questions. And every one of those questions was answered exactly, they knew exactly what was going on, they had all the answers, they didn't have to go ask somebody else, they didn't have to go look something else, they didn't have to say, well, we'll, we'll find out and we'll get back to you. Um, so I have to tell you that the, the help that they've given me and the help that all the staff here has given me to try to get settled into this, my position here and, uh, on the city council, I'm just very grateful for, for having the city of Granbury, uh, to be here and to be on your city council. And it's, I think a lot of you know that this ain't my first rodeo, but I gotta tell you, this is like riding a whole lot better horse. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm not sure what that makes me, but, uh, anybody else? Thank you. All right, we will move right on to number five, public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. We have one public hearing tonight. Mr. Walker, do we have anyone who's signed up? And I will remind you, if you do want to speak on a public hearing item, that you would need to sign up, and we use that for, uh, first, public records and make sure we know who's here and who's speaking. I'll move to the consent agenda, number six. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed, will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Does anyone have a, uh, item that you'd like to take off and have further discussion? I see no one raising their hand. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent, consent agenda as presented.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second's been made by Mr. Vale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Hear none, nays, it passes six and oh. We will now move right to the deliberation agenda. Seven point one is the presentation of the City of Granbury's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to announce that we do have the annual audit completed, and Mr. Gregory is going to introduce our auditor to y'all, but, uh, as you've seen it in your packet, you've got a hard copy hand-delivered to you tonight for your record-keeping, but, uh, we'll be posting that online soon. But this is the presentation, and of course, if you have any questions, please don't be afraid to ask them, we'll certainly take care of those questions. Thank you for coming tonight, sir.
Good evening, council, city manager. Uh, for the presentation of the city's annual comprehensive financial report, I would like to introduce Cameron Aaron. He's an auditor with the Patillo Brown and Hill, uh, auditing firm. The firm has audited the city's financials for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, 2023, and prepared the audit book that is in front of you. I will turn the floor over to Cameron, and he will hit some highlights in the book. And if you have any further questions, uh, we both will be available to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava. Uh, thank you, city council, for choosing Patillo Brown and Hill as your auditors again this year. This is our second year to do the audit. Uh, I know Ava, and first year is always the hardest, second year is better, but we're all still learning. Uh, I know the process is always difficult on everyone, uh, when we come in and we ask a million questions, we ask for a million documents, and, uh, that's pretty much the hardest part, is finding all those documents, answering those documents within a reasonable time. And I'd like to thank Ava's staff in getting us that information. We wouldn't be able to present tonight, which is, uh, we're meeting at March thirtieth deadline to get your GFOA award. Uh, but it wouldn't be possible without their staff, as well as everyone putting in overtime and trying to get this thing knocked out in time. Uh, so in front of you should have your financial, uh, statements, this is the big packet, as well as a, a communication letter, which I'll start with the financial statements first. Uh, towards the front of the report, we've got, uh, a table of contents. The first, uh, four things is an introductory, uh, section, letter of transmittal required by GFOA in order to get your GFO, your certificate of financial achievement award, uh, and that for the fiscal year twenty-two was received. That certificate is also in there. Uh, but the big point, us, that we are providing as auditors is our opinion on how materially correct are these numbers. So that starts on pages, uh, one through three. Let's skip through here. Uh, starting on, uh, page one, at the independent auditor's report. And at the very top, it gives our opinion. The second paragraph, uh, or I'll start with the first paragraph, is what we're opining on, is the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund for the City of Granbury, Texas, uh, for the year ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, and the related note disclosures that go with those. In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects, uh, the respective financial position of each of these that I've, uh, stated, the governmental activities, business-type activities for this year ended, and the cash flows thereof. That is an unmodified opinion, that's the cleanest opinion that we can give. Uh, we don't give, uh, grades, but if we did, that would, that would be an A, so congratulations, congratulations on the finance team. Uh, one of the big, uh, what's, uh, accounting standards changes, which thing, makes things more difficult every year, the accounting standards board never takes any accounting standards away, but they're willing to add two or three every year. The big one this year was GASB ninety-six subscription-based IT arrangements, and we have that as a, as an emphasis of matter. Those are things that are new, everyone's learning the standard. It takes a lot of work to make sure that all the information is gathered and goes into this report correctly. So that's always a big concern when we, when we're starting out, is what's the standard? What are we doing about this? Are we gathering all the information? Uh, but our, our opinion was not modified to this, uh, respect. Um, after that, there is a, uh, management discussion and analysis over these numbers, starting on page four. Uh, it's got, um, as you can determine, this is management discussion analysis, it's not auditor discussion and analysis, but Ava and her staff put these, uh, descriptions together to help, uh, allow you and whoever's reading these financial reports to, to understand these numbers, where these numbers are coming from. Um, one of the big highlights is that bullet point number two on page four, the city's total net position increased, uh, by about twenty-one million. The city's operations increased, the governmental activities by, uh, almost four million. And in the business-type activities was almost, was about seventeen million. And we can talk about, uh, as we go through this, what caused those big increases. Uh, the governmental funds combine, uh, combining ending fund balance for the year, this is your bottom line for your governmental funds, which normally you're staying on top of, you're budgeting for your general fund, looking at special revenue funds, some capital projects funds, uh, which y'all, um, are looking at, uh, on a day-to-day basis, but that, uh, had a combined ending fund balance of sixty-nine million. Um, and then for the general fund, unassigned fund balance, which you can use to pretty much pay with whatever you need to on an ongoing basis, uh, was fifteen million, or seventy-three percent of total general fund expenditures. Uh, so normally when we're looking at general fund, unassigned fund balance, and we're comparing to the expenditures for the year, uh, a healthy position is somewhere between four and six months, as if, you know, you were going along and for some reason no money was coming in. How long are you, are you gonna be able to sustain yourself? Uh, so that's a healthy fund balance to be, that meets that, that standard. Uh, the other, I'd like to skip over to page, uh, sixteen, uh, if that's okay, is a statement of net position. And for the primary government, here's our governmental activities and our business-type activities. Um, your business-type activities is really your enterprise funds, uh, your governmental activities is kind of your, your governmental funds, but on a different accrual basis of accounting. So in this column, uh, we're putting on long-term assets, capital assets, your, your long-term debt, uh, are shown in here. And these are broken out further discussion, for further, uh, review in the note disclosures as well. And, uh, I think we've mentioned, your ending net position is there on page seventeen. Uh, your unrestricted net position for governmental activities and business-type activities, and those are healthy. Page eighteen and nineteen is a, a long-term, you know, we're looking at this stuff long-term. Uh, and, let's see, there's your, your, uh, talks about your primary government, uh, how much, uh, expenses and charges of services related to certain functions and departments. Um, but normally, uh, these are just provided as part of the financial statements, they're not, um, they are looked at, uh, but the biggest concern, I think, for most governments is where they're looking at their governmental funds, which start on page twenty and twenty-twenty-one. We've got our balance sheet, and, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, it continues, but then starting on page twenty-five is basically your, your income for the year, what you've budgeted for, you can see how well you've, uh, how much revenues you've come in, have brought in for the general fund, how much total expenditures, and there's that ending seventeen point thirty-eight, uh, million dollars on page twenty-five for your general fund. Uh, I think that's the biggest concern for local governments, is how, how well are we doing in that general fund? That's the bulk of what we're, what takes place, what we're budgeting for, that's what we're looking at. Uh, so other than that, um, there is page twenty and twenty-nine are state, are your proprietary funds for utility fund, airport, some internal service fund transactions, I think, was it like equipment replacement? I can't remember off the top of my head, uh, what that internal service fund is. Uh, but all these numbers are, are, um, starting on page thirty-six is the note disclosures, uh, which help, uh, understand these numbers more. And I think the other thing, uh, you can see on page forty-six, there's a capital asset section, which part of our new, uh, standard that we had to implement. Uh, we had to put on, uh, it's basically subscriptions that are used by the city, but they go, they extend beyond a year. So this really doesn't, what we, what happens in the standard is you record an asset, a right-to-use asset, and we also, and for the same amount, you record a long-term, uh, liability. It's a wash to net position, they just want things categorized differently. Um, and like, when you budget for things in the general fund, they've already, the expenditures have already been budgeted for, but we're just showing, moving things around and presenting them differently now, according to the new standard that had to go into place for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. And you can see there's a right-to-use, uh, which called Sabida, subscription-based IT arrangements. And for the year, uh, that ended, we've got a, or you have, you've got a, a million dol, one point eight million dollar right-to-use asset for that. And that same, uh, asset that went on in the governmental, uh, activities on page forty-eight, uh, we put on, uh, beginning balance for that long-term liability, it was one point six, and now we're making, we're, we're normally making, uh, like, software expenditures in the general fund, well now we're just gonna call that principal and interest, uh, for some of that. And that same offsetting liability is now at nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. But again, this doesn't, this didn't really affect, uh, net position or, or fund balance, because those things were already, uh, budgeted for, and an offsetting liability in an assets is the same amount. So I just thought I would bring that up, because it, it, understanding that new standard is very difficult, and, uh, gathering all the contracts and reading them all and making sure they're properly applied by the finance team was, uh, difficult, uh, to say the least, is difficult for all of our clients that we've seen. So after, uh, the note disclosures, we have further breakdowns of other special revenue funds, uh, some capital projects that weren't major. Uh, we've also got a statistical section in there that talks, uh, as part of the GFOA award requirements, where if you want to get that award, where finance team had to disclose even more information. So they're going above and beyond. Those were, uh, the highlights of the financial statements I wanted to bring out. Uh, but also for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, the city expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards. So when that happens, what, uh, triggers for us, we call it a single audit, so where we have to go in and select specific federal programs, then now we got to do more testing. Um, and for this year, I think we tested, uh, there was one that was nine million dollars for capitalization grants, drinking water state revolving funds. We had to go do a separate audit now. And we can see on page one thirty-four, uh, basically a breakdown of all of our opinions, if we had any findings or material weaknesses, they would all be listed there, uh, as part of that, that single audit report. So the page schedule findings and question costs, type of auditor's report over the financial statements was an unmodified opinion. We did not find any material weaknesses or internal control deficiencies in our audit. Uh, so, great job. Um, also for federal awards, we had to, to opine on those as well. Uh, there were no material weaknesses found in that specific, uh, federal program that we had to test. Uh, we issued an unmodified appoint on that as well. Uh, and that, pretty much the things off the top of my head that I wanted to cover with y'all. Uh, for the financial statements, there's a separate, uh, communication letter, uh, that we've given separate to it. Normally, we can either do this, uh, in a written form or just talk to y'all about this, we always like to use the written form. Uh, but this is our communication about responsibilities of us as auditors, uh, scoping and timing, independence requirements that have to be met, uh, any things that we think that may be riskier areas that we want to focus on, we also document those. Uh, the, I think there's a section that talks about risks, those are not findings or, or any kind of material weakness. Uh, since we can't come in and audit every little detail of every little thing, we have to set risks. What, okay, is this new standard is, is risky, because it's very complicated. Uh, so those are basically just documenting where we spend a lot of our time. Other than that, uh, if y'all had any questions for me, um, hopefully I can answer your questions, or if I can't, Ava can step in and help out. Uh, but thank y'all for choosing Patillo Brown and Hill again, uh, we're looking forward to next year.
Council, questions?
Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
I just have a comment. So, and I, I had an opportunity to meet with Chris and Ava today, uh, after lunch. Um, I had a page of questions that, um, as Skip said, they knew all the answers, so, um, you know, obviously I've gone through the report, you know, I think, uh, you know, the community should feel very good. I mean, we are financially sound organization in the city. We're in a great financial, uh, position, we've got great, uh, accounting practices, you know, page one thirty-four, when I was working, I got audited a lot. Um, I worked for a food company, we had a, we were owned by a big tobacco company, and when the big tobacco company came in and did our audit, uh, it was a couple of weeks, and, uh, you know, at the end of that, if everything went well, it was, it was, uh, you know, take the staff out for, for a toast, so maybe that will happen. Um, you know, we're in a great position from a fund balance, uh, we've used that each year, you know, we've got unexpected issues and situations that arise, just like your household. Uh, and if you've got a reserve in place, uh, like we do, uh, we're being able to meet those, meet those needs and obligations that they've, if they've, as they've come up. So Ava, thank you to you, Chris, the staff, you know, and all the people that worked so diligently to put this together, and all the people that worked so diligently... that work so diligently, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, to really create a great environment and a great financial situation for our, for our city and our community, which, at the end of the day, I mean, we really are, are blessed, and it's great for our community. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Others? Okay. This is a public document. It is out there on our website. I encourage each and every one of you to peruse it. It's, it is the, the document, the go-to document for me, because it tells you not only this year's budget, but last year's, whatever happened over, over the years. It's a great job. And thanks to the finance group, Chris, the entire staff for putting this together.
I might just add that we will also have what we call a personal annual financial report available to you online, which is a much easier read than this hundred-and-thirty-four-page document. And it's got lots of pictures in large print, and illustrates well and communicates well. It's a great communication piece. If you don't do anything else, look at that one for sure. It's, it's such an easy read, and it explains everything that's going on in the last year with the city. And then, of course, our budget explains everything that's going on this year. So I would encourage you to look at both of those and enjoy the time reading that. And I believe it or not, I actually have citizens that come to me and say, you know, I can't believe I read this, but what a great document that y'all have, the budget document. What a great audit, what a great job that you're doing, you know. They read these documents that are out there. I know that not everybody reads them, maybe one out of a thousand. But they're out there, and I encourage you to look them over, because there's a lot of good stuff in there that you'll understand exactly how your money is being spent. Thanks, Ava, for your hard work.
Thank you.
Y'all may not know it, but we were, in the transition of our Assistant Finance Director during this audit, she left us to go to Washington State. And it caused a lot of weeping and gnashing of teeth, and a lot of work over the weekends to get all this put together. We do have a statutory deadline of the end of this month, and thank goodness we were able to get there. Plus, we were dealing with a cyber event where we didn't even have computer access till about December. So it's been a rough time for the finance department and our billing department, and every procurement that ever had to be made. And every, every department just had to pull out all stops and make it work. And we're very happy to get through with all that. And our great team at the, our IT team has done a great job, and, and we're just getting stronger every day. So thank all of you for what you've done to get this audit put together. Thanks for your team, too, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, we're gonna move to item number seven. We will have a discussion and consider extending an invitation to the Ken Hill Foundation for location of the Silent Prey statue by Covell Jones on city property, and communicate the invitation from the Shanley Park Asoci- Association for Black Star to be placed on their privately-owned property to, and that will begin the Shanley Sculpture Garden in their park. Mr. Kaufman, wanna bring us up to date on this, please?
Well-read, Mayor. That agenda item is a mouthful, but I wanted to be sure that we communicate to everybody, what we're proposing here is, we're asking the council to consider taking the recommendation from the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission to allow, or to invite the Ken Hill Foundation to place their Silent Prey sculpture on the city property right outside this building between it and the Moment in Time Trail. So I think it's important to be there. I'm gonna kind of give you some ideas of why the, everybody's pointing that direction, is it can be seen by vehicle and by foot traffic. And Mr. Jones is a well-renowned sculpture artist in the, in the entire nation, and has pieces all, all across the nation, including DC, the state Capitol, all over. And there's a website that everybody can go to. This is a picture of the, the art piece superimposed in the grass. And so you can kind of see what it looks like. It's an Indian fighting off a cougar that's attacked him. That's why he's called Silent Prey. So Mr. Hill was in the process, the, the history behind these two art pieces. Mr. Hill was in the process of taking Comanche Peak into a historic center, where there would be a historic learning center about the Comanche Indians, and also have a, a type of historical resort there where people could actually stay and experience the, the nature, and, and look at the history up there on that mountain, and, or that plateau, and, and see what's going on historically. And his goal was to have this statue, or this sculpture piece, somewhere in that Comanche Peak area, as people were coming in. As you well know, there's already a sculpture of an Indian warrior on a horse that's about this same size on the entrance to that ranch. And so when he passed away, these two sculptures were left unattended. And they're sitting at Covell Jones Shop in Bastrop, Texas, waiting to be placed somewhere. And I know that the Ken Hill Foundation is important to Granberry. As many of y'all may have known Mr. Hill, he was a successful pharmacist on the square. He, he invented some software for the pharmacy industry, and never saw a poor day after that. So he, his business was thriving when he passed away. And his CEO of his business, his executor of his foundation that he's created, they've given away literally millions of dollars locally to nonprofits in our community. They've been a big part of the success since COVID. And a lot of survival of our nonprofits since COVID. And so I would just encourage you to consider this, and let's, if y'all, council desires to do so, let's extend an invitation to the foundation to place that piece of art at that location. The other piece of art is called Black Star, and it was a Indian lady that actually lived on Comanche Peak at one time. I believe she was alive as late as nineteen-seventy-four in Washington State. And some people in this room may know her. And, but Ken Hill knew her and had this statue created for her, and it's a replica of her. And Shanley Park is owned by the Shanley Art Association, and they have wanted to begin a sculpture garden on, on their parkland. As you know, our Moment in Time Trail cuts through their park. And because of that easement agreement that was drafted by some of the folks in this very room, we've got a, a park that we get to maintain and have a walking trail through. And the folks that own it want to keep it open space and have a sculpture garden there. So anyway, we, we put Black Star on here just as a point of education, that that is a private park that we enjoy as, as a partner with them. And they would like that to be the first piece in their art garden. The other piece that we're talking about on the city property would kind of be an entrance to the sculpture garden, if you're walking from the square to the sculpture garden. So there's a lot of folks working really hard to create this sculpture garden. The, the Shanley Art Association, the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission is working with them. And of course, Tammy Dooley is working with our Granberry Cultural Arts Association to help them succeed in what they're doing as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know this has been talked about extensively over the past several months. We were waiting to make sure that all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed as to who owned that property, and make sure that the Shanley Art Association owns that property. And we've actually got documentation that shows that. It's changed names. It used to be the Centennial Celebration, Bicentennial Celebration Committee LLC, which was a nonprofit. And they've changed their name and have merged with the Shanley Art Association. So, pretty interesting how it's all worked together. Shows you what the community can do when they work together. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, have questions?
Mayor, just a comment. I just, I just want to say thank you to Chris. I met with Chris today on this item. There's a lot of moving pieces in here. I think I had to get myself educated a little bit, having been here ten years. There were still some things that I didn't know. And I didn't know the whole makeup of Shanley Park and who owned what. And, and so just thank you, Chris, for getting me all squared away with that. And, and that helped me kind of better understand this agenda item. So thank you.
Others? Okay. No other comments, questions? Do I hear a motion to extend an invitation to the Ken Hill Foundation for location of the Silent Prey statue by Covell Jones on city property, and communicate the invitation from the Shanley Park Association for Black Star to be placed on their privately-owned property? And this will begin the Shanley Scripture Garden in the park. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wobblingus?
Second.
Mr. Overderritt, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. We will pass that six and oh. We're now gonna go to a public hearing. Are we going to go to seven-point-three, which is a public hearing? We will conduct a public hearing to consider a petition from the Bridge Street History Center to rename the Lake Granberry Conference Center to the new name of the David Southern Lake Granberry Conference Center. We'll have staff give a presentation on this and provide information to the council. I have about seven people that have signed up. If others want to sign up, now would be the time to speak, and I'll open-
Mayor, counsel. As you know, there was a request petition submitted to the council to consider naming, rename the Lake Granberry Conference Center to the new name of the David Southern Lake Granberry Conference Center. That petition states many facts about David's life as a council member, a mayor, and as a committee member or a board member with the city for over about fifty years of service of his life. And so the requests come from the Bridge Street History Center to rename the conference center in honor of Mayor David Southern. I think that the memo is pretty explanatory. But for those in the audience, I just want you to know that we've worked with this group for about nine months to get to where we are. We didn't want this to become some kind of a political item, and, and they were gracious enough to wait till after the election to submit the petition. We thank you for that. We look forward to comments and concerns, or whatever y'all may have. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. I would like to note that a private donor has offered to fund the cost, so there will be no cost to the city or to the History Center. How that fleshes out, we'll work that through. It'll either be a reimbursement to the city or, or to the Bridge Street Center. However the donor wants to provide those funds, it'll be tax-deductible for them either way. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I did put some exhibits in there that we worked with a signed company to kind of see how it would look. I think that you can see, there may be some difference by the time we actually get it built, you know, get the sign built and installed. But that's, that's the gist of what's been requested. So, obviously, the sign company has a lot to do with the final rendition of how it would be. And somewhere, the cost is somewhere between thirteen and fifteen thousand dollars, we think. So. Any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm sorry. Okay. I have Ms. Dominique Ee, who's signed up to speak. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address. And I think you have five minutes of time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And gentlemen of the City Council, it is my honor and privilege to address you this evening on the subject of renaming the conference center to the David Southern Lake Granberry Conference Center. And I would like to give you a few reasons. David Southern was our longest-serving mayor, and during his terms, he accomplished many things. And I would like to cite a few of those as highlights. He was, in fact, a visionary, a gifted leader, an astute businessman, an urban planner, and his vision was always to promote Granberry. His multiple terms as mayor, his achievements, the so-called million-dollar parking lot has been an enormous boost to Granberry. And as I live in proximity to it, I can tell you that it is used extensively, almost daily. And so that million dollars, I feel confident, was amortized by usage alone. Many of his achievements were actually at the risk of reelection. I would like to point out that we owe this beautiful building, this city hall, to David Southern. As I go back into the hinterlands of memory, I recall the days when the city council meetings were held in a building, I think it was a furniture store nearby. And the councilmen had folding tables with metal chairs. There was nothing like this. And the audience was also seated in folding metal chairs. There were maybe eight or possibly a dozen of the folding chairs there against a wall. That was where city council meetings were held. I remember them well. So, these beautiful chambers are owing to David Southern's vision to have a city hall right in the center of town. And it was a controversy at the time of where to locate it. But he knew, as an urban planner, that to have a building like this in the center of town was very, very important. And right near the county courthouse, so all of the government offices could be adjacent. And to have a building such as this, where the administrative offices, community development, utilities, and at the time, the police department was in this building. It has since later moved because they outgrew the space. The, the tourist office was also on the east end of that original part of the building. And they have now moved because they outgrew the space. We owe this beautiful building to him. The conference center, of course, is a case in point. And I would like to point out that it was David Southern's business acumen and his exceptional negotiating skills that helped to achieve that. It took eleven years for that to be accomplished. He did work with a committee, but it was largely his negotiating skills that made it possible. And it has been an enormous tourist attraction with the Hilton Garden Inn and the conference center adjacent, where corporate retreats, conferences are held. It's been a huge tourist attraction. And the boardwalk right there on the lake, it was an enormous achievement. David Southern was a passionate supporter of historic preservation. And he did everything he could to support the efforts and the beautiful homes that are here. During his term, there was the candlelight tour of homes that was started, another tourist attraction. He saw the possibilities of Granberry and what it could become.
Ms. Ee, they're gonna be all over me if I let you continue talking.
She didn't have time for a minute.
May I?
Please, yes.
May I just say that he also was a supporter of the arts? And he began what was called the Granberry Mayor's Choice Award for the Rio Brazos Arts, where the mayor could choose a work of art that would then be displayed in city hall to, for the public to view. It was wonderful. The no-smoking ordinance, a breath of fresh air for us all. And I might just say that when I first came to Granberry, Granberry, Texas was not even on the Doppler radar. Now, it is. Another point that Mayor Southern was very proud of. And- Another point that Mayor Southern was very proud of, and it was, I believe, in about two thousand and six, the Wall Street Journal published an article about Granberry. This was on the front page, above the fold, and the Wall Street Journal characterized Granberry as a micropolis, and the word spread that that word was coined by the Wall Street Journal. Actually, I think it existed before, and the Journal just revived it, and they used the term to describe a city that was a big, little city near a metroplex that had so many of the amenities that a larger city would have. I remember David Southern was enormously proud of this article. I'm sure it's in the city's archives to read. With your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, I would like to end my remarks with an anecdote that was told to me by David Southern himself. I'm sure we will all remember his resonant baritone voice, which he was able to call up when he needed to have just a little extra measure of authority. Well, the occasion for this anecdote was the Granberry Opera House. It was a social event there, and David Southern and I were having an animated conversation about actors and acting, and he told me that in high school, he had been in a senior play. So I asked him, "Oh, what role did you play?" And he said, "The voice of God." This concludes my remarks, and I wish, I hope that you will approve this measure. I give you my full and unreserved endorsement. I believe this would be a tremendously important tribute to David Southern. Thank you for your consideration.
I'm not sure what is gonna be harder tonight, me saying, "Please, Ms. Ee, would you hurry it up," or any of you who want to follow her. So I have Mr. Tom Hamilton. Dr. Tom Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Director of the Bridge Street History Center, I've been asked to represent the center in requesting the council to approve the nomination of, the change of name of the conference center. And Dominique did such a fantastic job of describing Dave's accomplishments. I just echo the things that she says, and we have quite a turnout here in favor. I would just like to ask the people that are in favor of this nomination to stand, please.
Oh, my.
So, I hope you can see, we are firmly in favor of this resolution and hope you will honor it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Ms. Peters, you gave up your time, really?
Do you know how hard that is for me?
I know. I'm enjoying every minute of it. Chris Fay Landon?
I've lived in Hood County about ten years. I've lived in the city six, and I think I have attended nearly every city council meeting for the last six years, but there's only been two times where I have spoken at a city council meeting that I can remember. Don't even remember what the other one's about. But I'm here tonight to support naming the conference center after David Southern. His name was one of the first names I heard when I moved to Granberry. I heard he was a mover and a shaker. And, let's see. David did so much for our town during the times that he was served and our many nonprofits. I know he donated so much to nonprofits, and he was great, we greatly appreciated those. His generosity speaks volumes, therefore, I recommend renaming the conference center after him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landon. Ms. Mary Addicks?
Three minutes.
No one could out-speak Dominique, and I echo everything she said. David loved his Lord, he loved his Claudia, Allison and Jack and his grandchildren, and then he loved Granberry. And he devoted his life's work to the improvements that we now enjoy. He was my friend, and I would be so proud for him to have this conference center renamed. It was one of his dreams. And now I want to thank our city manager, Chris, because when I first came heartbroken after David passed to talk to Chris about David, he said, "Well, you know, Mary, we don't have any guidelines or any written anything to allow us to name anything after anyone in the city. It has never been done." But he said, "I'm gonna take that challenge, I'm gonna take it to the mayor, and I'm gonna take it to the council and see if we can get some guidelines approved so that in the future, we can honor such people as David." And of course, there are others that, I'm looking at you, Julia, but there are others that deserve some sort of recognition, and Chris, I thank you for getting that job done. I know it was a lot of work on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Addicks. Mr. Richard Addicks?
It's a hard act to follow to get up here behind your wife and talk to them and things like this, but, and I echo everything that everyone said, and I too want to thank Chris and Dr. Hamilton and, of course, Maurice Walton and all the people that have contributed to this coming to us tonight. When I moved to Granberry, it wasn't high on people's lists to move here. There was a lot of problems, and it wasn't the most glamorous place in the world, had a lot of shortcomings, and everyone remembers the furniture store and the PD being upstairs, and we just had a closet upstairs in the attic of the furniture store for a PD. We didn't have any resources whatsoever. And one of the first people I met, of course, was David and Claudia. They welcomed me in. I became an ambassador, I think, to Granberry, to the service that they gave, shook hands with Rick Perry, George Bush, Laura Bush, many, many people that they personally brought into Granberry and opened their eyes to the beauty that we had here. David was a lot of fun. He was just a joy in my life. He was, he was my friend, and I just want this council to recognize the fact that David loved this community. He loved these people, he loved me, he loved his family. But more important to you, he loved his town, and he touched everything in it. Just time to think about it, how beautiful it is that David Southern was here. That million-dollar parking lot that he took so much heed for has been worth, it has been worth a million dollars to this community. I would pay it myself if I could afford it and hope that this city would appreciate what David did. That civic center was a hellhole. Back when I moved here, it was the ship's wheel, and we got a lot of business out of the ship's wheel, PD did, and it was an abandoned marina with gas tanks buried, and it was on the market for pennies, pennies at the time because of its pitiful shape. But with a vision and with the acumen and the pride and the hope and optimism that David had, you can look at what we have now for it. He did so many things like that. He took this city from where it was to where it is. We should recognize him for it. We should be grateful for the service he gave, and on behalf of my friend, that's good you did that tonight.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Mr. Mickey Parsons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Mickey Parsons. I live at eleven fifteen Mallard Way here in the big city of Granberry. I had the privilege of serving on council with Mr. Southern for a while. David was a real friend of mine, and we had a lot of good times and a lot of work in serving the city. Couple of things that haven't been talked about tonight. I've often thought that one of the best, the biggest, best assets that the city has is the right to ten thousand six hundred acre feet of water in the B R A system. We eventually got a saltwater treatment plant to process that water, and I think in the summer, it's producing something like five million gallons a day, can go up to ten million gallons. But back in nineteen ninety-four, Mr. Southern was here to advocate for us, for the city, acquiring the rights to that Brazos River water. And then for a number of years, we went where we were paying pretty good money for water rights that we weren't using, but for a long term, fifty, sixty years, seventy years, that's gonna be one of the best assets the city ever has. A comment, quick comment about the million-dollar parking lot. Most people really didn't understand that there was an economic development potential between, by the city buying that. Now, that's called Granberry Square Plaza. That facility became usable because of the purchase of that parking lot. Also, another great event or another event was the Opera House. The Opera House was originally built by the community, operated by the community, and somewhere in there, the community, the leaders of the community that were working in there decided to really expand the Opera House. Well, it expanded and spent more money than it could capture, could recapture. So David led us and city council to go in and purchase the Opera House into the city. We knew that that particular building with that Opera House in it was very important to the vitality of our count of the city, and we purchased that building, and then eventually it became the beautiful Opera House that we have today. So I'm in support of the petition presented by the Bridge House, Bridge Street Museum, and I will tell you that the way we ended up with that was because of David Southern. He worked with the citizens that were on that street that had assets that they wanted to give to the city, and David created that Bridge Street Museum building and was a large part of the beginning and the success of that. And I want to thank my friends on the Bridge Street Museum for their efforts and thank them for bringing this petition forward. I support it. Please vote for it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That's everyone that we had sign up to speak, minus one. Thank you, Ms. Peters. I, it does not go unnoticed that we all, sitting up here, stand on the shoulders of those who've come before us, and it's a pleasure to look out in the audience and know that there's so many shoulders out here that we have been allowed to stand on to get to where we are today in this beautiful cities. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public session, and I'll ask, is there, are any of the comments or questions that we have from the council? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just sitting here trying to think of some comments and what I hear, and hopefully, I say this correctly, David Southern is one man. He was supported by the council at his time, and when I went back there and looked at the pictures that were hanging, there's twenty-eight photos up there of city council, and he's in eleven of those photos. And I just want to say that he had a lot of people in his life as he grew up to shape and influence him. And throughout his life, he picked up an attribute of service, service, to serve others, to serve his family, to serve his friends, and also his community. He served as a council member, a mayor, and as a board member on several other city boards, even up until his day. Having his name on the conference center is the least I can do. He served ten years on council, fifteen years as mayor, and also many other years as a board member. It is, it is hard to sit up here and, and just, and just give him that recognition. I mean, he deserves more, and that's all I got to say now.
Mr. Bailey?
Mayor, one of, you know, obviously, we had a lot of people here tonight. Thank you all for coming. I spent quite a bit of time on this agenda item. You know, any, any time you make a decision on something, you kind of look at what you're doing. We're setting a precedent, and that's important to think about as you, as you look at these things. I think, as everybody knows, there's a plaque on the conference center today with the council and city staff that were responsible for the construction of the Lake Granberry Conference Center in two thousand and eight. David was the mayor up until he left office in two thousand and ten. And as Mary Addick said, on February the seventh of two thousand and twenty-three, the city council developed a policy which was necessary to establish some kind of uniform procedure for the name and renaming of any street or any other city-owned facility, park, et cetera. And if, as you read back through that document, there's five guiding principles, and there's four criteria to consider when naming individuals, and that document is available to you. As you know, we just celebrated our annual Founder's Day Jubilee. It was previously known as General Granberry's birthday, still kind of controversial. However, you know, that was changed by H G M A several years ago, and apparently still a point of contention was some. The event is really, in my mind, to celebrate the people, the founders of our community and who put this town together. These are the people that made a difference in the early and continued development of Granberry as we know it today, and a lot of conversation around, you know, what it looked like well before I got here a decade ago. And while I think we all contribute to the community, there's always a few people that always stand out, people that have made a difference over time, and people that show up, and people that are extraordinary contributors to things. We have streets named after some of them. You can go through your head and kind of think about which ones those are. A hotel, we have houses named after people. Our football field is named after an important individual in our community. So it does happen. I had the opportunity to meet and talk with David over the years and Claudia as well. He had a passion for our community. I think that's been said here tonight. He served not only on city council and mayor, but he continued his involvement, you know, even after office, serving on boards and commissions, and always being involved in our community until he left office, as I, as I said, in two thousand and ten. And as I read back through the five guiding principles and the four items to consider when naming individuals, I think David certainly meets those criteria from my perspective, and I think this is shared by at least a half dozen people that I talked to personally about this, and some of you are here tonight in this room. So, you know, Granberry is where Texas history lives, and I hear that every Friday from Dan Vanderburg at Rise and Grind, and I think you can see David's hand in many projects in our city, you know, from the conference center, City Beach, City Hall, Moments in Time, et cetera, et cetera. And I think David is one of those individuals that helped shape the history for the betterment of Granberry. So, thank you.
Other comments, council? Greg?
I need to add something.
Mr. Goldman?
So for clarification, let me read something to you out of our policy. By the way, it's a policy, not an ordinance of law. It's a policy. Council, city council adopted. So the city attorney brought this up to me, and I think it deserves mentioning and addressing and moving on. So, renaming existing streets, facilities, parks, and features. The city shall publish in the official newspaper record, shall send notification letters to impacted properties as required by city ordinance, state statute, and shall hold a public hearing on proposed name change. Following the public hearing, the city council may adopt a resolution officially naming, renaming a street, facility, park, or feature. There's also another sentence or two about new streets, facilities, parks, and features and requirements for that. But I did not post any letters anywhere because the city owns this property, and we did post the public hearing as required by law. The, if you rename a street, it is a technical issue where you have to notify every property owner on that street of the name change by certified mail as required by state law. In this situation, there's not a need to do that for the impacted property owners because it's the city. There's not another, not another organization impacted by the name change other than the city. So I just want to bring that out- So I just want to bring that out. I'm fine with moving forward with your action, whatever you want to do tonight. But if you have a desire to do something different than what I've done, I would encourage you to step up. Again, this is a policy. It's not a law, but it is a process that we adopted. And I didn't feel like it was, a letter was needed to be notified to any property owner because everything there is the city-owned property. Across the street, we have the Hewlett Park. We have a Realtor and a couple of retail shops. But I don't see that that impacts them in any way at all. If we were renaming that street, you would have an issue. But with a word of caution, I just wanted to bring that out, that a certain city attorney, I just stumbled into that sentence, and he brought that to my attention, and I thought it would be wise to at least discuss it tonight and let you all understand that. So if you have a need to have me do more notification to somebody, please direct me to do so, and we can delay this if we need to. But that's kind of where I'm at.
That sounds like you're being very transparent.
Yes.
Yes, I think so. Counsel, do you have comments or questions on this? Do you? I suggest that we continue to move on. Anybody want to object? We did close the public hearing. There was a question that I had over here. So with that, does anyone want to make a motion that we rename the Lake Granbury Conference Center to the David Southern Lake Granbury Conference Center?
Mayor?
Mr. Corrigan?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the petition from the Bridge Street History Center to rename the Lake Granbury Conference Center to the new name of the David Southern Lake Granbury Conference Center, as stated.
Second.
And Mr. Vail, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I believe that will pass 6-0. I thought you were all standing to leave. Don't. Let's move to 7.4. Mr. Kaufman, I believe you have a monthly plat approval report for us after all of the good work that you and the group have done to just make those state laws get approved downstairs?
Yes, sir. This is a new attempt to provide you a monthly report on the progress of plats and things being approved administratively, based on the changes you recently made to the code. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wowie, our Director of Community Development, to go over her report. But you might want to give them a couple of minutes to clear the room. Because I know how soft-spoken you are.
Big stick.
Very short.
Let me know if you can't hear me, and I'll try to elevate my volume here for you.
Go right ahead.
So we have four items to report to you that were administratively approved. I don't have a formal presentation with maps and the like, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to help you out and answer those. The first item is located at 2305 Weatherford Highway. It's on Highway 51. And the lake, it's right there at the bridge up north here. Property's own interim holding, and the applicant sought to construct a single-family, one single-family dwelling on the property, and therefore, we platted it. The second item is 600 West Bridge Street. That's the Decker Gym property. The city decided that it needed to make two lots out of the multiple lots that are existing, and therefore, it was platted out into two lots.
Kara, could you wait just a minute till we get? I see chief clearing the place here. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Not to the hat. It was very quick. Wasn't getting first up for you in the future.
Okay, Kara, if you will, please. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, sir. So that was West Bridge Street. The Decker Gym was platted. The next item, the third item, is 4001 De Cordova Ranch Road. Now, this property is located in the ETJ. The project was in process, and the applicant requested to continue through the process with the city rather than move over to the county for review. That particular property consisted of two lots, and the owner desired to combine the two lots. And the last plat was the Bella Vista Final Plat, located 1101 Loop 567 there at Nettie Beckett's. And that plat created 65 single-family residential lots. That's what I have for you. Thank you.
And tomorrow, you've got a meeting with the developer, a pre-construction meeting, or the staff does, to kick that development off. So that's making progress.
It is. Thank you.
And in the future, I just had a request. Maybe we could do some quick visuals of each tract as we move forward, creating this new report.
Sure.
Just, I don't want it to involve a long, lengthy report, but I'd like for it to be brief. And then by all means, if you have questions, that's what I'm here for, and we can show you whatever. But we'll put together a presentation every month after we get things done on a regular basis and have a report for you in your council packet so that you can keep up with all the development going on and what we've approved administratively. There will be financial infrastructure agreements that come before you related to some of these plats as we move forward that will eliminate the need for some of this stuff. But you'll be building the loop for those infrastructure agreements to see what's going on as well. But I just thought it'd be good to show you a little bit and just think about all the time that that saved you all, not having to go through four public hearings for each one of those agenda items. And they're really no brainers. So, thank you, Kara. Do you have any questions?
No, just comment, Chris. Mayor, sorry. Just thanks for putting that on here. I'm really happy that we've, you know, made the change. I think we're trying to streamline things. You know, that was, you know, one of the big objectives of just trying to streamline the process for a lot of different things, and I think this works well. So thank you for the update on that, Kara. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions? No? Then we can go ahead and close that. I believe that gets us through the agenda. So I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session. All members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. And that is, one section we have is 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. We are now in closed session. We were going to reconvene. I now declare the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session. All council members are present. Is there any other further business, gentlemen? No? No? There being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned. Thank you.